We have. Oh, Walt is coming on. And I know Jamie said that she was going to be a little late. And Donna won't. Won't be joining us tonight. And so. Um, we'll give Jamie just a few minutes, maybe three to five minutes. Um, and see if she can jump on, let's see, we do have. A quorum at this time, uh, while we're waiting, um, you all can, board members, you can, um. Open up another link to super eval. Um, that's where we're going to be doing our. Um, our portion of the agenda tonight. Um, Dr. Thompson, uh, when is, uh, Mr. Barker expecting to come on?
Um, I thought he was gonna come on at five thirty, so I don't know, I guess we'll just have to watch for him.
Okay, because I almost. Maybe would have him do his presentation first, just so he can. Get on, but if, I mean, if he's not on, he's. He's not on, what we'll probably do is maybe. Once he comes on, um. Cause we did tell him we had an agenda, but oh, there he is. Well, now. Mister Barker, how are you tonight?
Doing well, Mr. President, how are you tonight?
I'm doing good, um, I was just talking to Dr. Thompson, and I think what we will do. Is, uh, we're waiting for, um, another board member. And, um. I, I think what we'll do is let you go, uh, first after. Well, items for board discussion, your number C, we'll put you in A, that way you can give your presentation. And, and head on with the rest of your day, so you're not waiting for us, we appreciate you coming on tonight. Okay, there we go with Ms. Clapham, so I think we have everybody that's going to. Be on tonight, so, um, I'd like to call this study session. Um, the Rapid City Area School Study Session for tonight, it is five thirty-two and. There you are, Sheila, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, Troy Carr.
Here.
Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Katie Urban.
Here.
Um, Donna Moore is absent with notice and, uh, Walt Swan.
Here.
Angela Rafferty.
Here.
And Christine Stephenson.
Here.
Okay, um, I'm gonna do some research, uh. I don't know how much sense it makes to say the pledge of allegiance at this point unless somebody has an. Objection or know why it has to be done, we will forego that. Um, we are on, uh, step three, item three, approval of the proposed agenda. Um, as you all have, um, have heard, I will recommend that we change. Um, six C, uh, to be the first item, so six A. And Dr. Thompson, um, communicated to us. That six A and B, um, are really the same thing, was.
B and C are the same.
B and C, okay, so B and C are the same, so we'll do. B and C first. A and then D. All right, any other recommended changes, um, from any board member? Okay, if not, I, um, recommend that we approve the proposed agenda as amended.
I moved.
Been moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um. Let's do a roll call for the vote.
Troy Carr.
Yes.
Jamie Clapham.
Yes.
Ja- um, Katie Urban.
Yes.
Walt Swan.
Yes.
Angela Rafferty.
Yes.
Christine Stephenson.
Yeah.
Six zero.
Okay, very good, do we have anybody for open forum? I was not notified of. Of anybody, Sheila did we, anybody, I don't see anybody else on. Um. Okay, so, um, at this point, we don't have any open forum participants, which means we don't have response. To open forum, and at this time, uh. Mister Barker, you, uh, are up, so if you would just give us a little. Introduction, and I don't know, Dr. Thompson, if you want to say something, you're free to do so, but, um, Mister Barker, you're up.
Okay, thank you, um. I guess I could just introduce myself again, I was, um. Dave Barker with McPherson Jacobson, and I've been superintendent, I was a superintendent for seventeen years in Wyoming, um, now doing some. Teaching up at the University of South Dakota in the, uh, educational leadership program, so I'm on my third year up there. And, um, I do some of these searches every year and, and enjoy the, the follow-up with it, so. Go to, I think I can share my. Oh. Desktop. To do that. See if this comes up. Okay. See the. First slide. Board superintendent roles and expectations.
Okay, we don't see anything at, or I don't see anything at this point, Mister.
Okay, um.
Bobby, do you need to give him permission to share?
Okay.
There it is.
Okay. There it is.
Because the internet is just lagging a little, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that tonight, that's kind of our phase five. Uh, we would do more work on an evaluation, uh, if you weren't already going through that, so. This would be, um, quite a bit shorter than what we would normally go through, so, um, and if there's any follow-up on any of. If to, to ask that, and I will get started. Maybe. Okay, so. I've, I've had this question asked at a workshop, uh, when I was superintendent of our board, one time, we were working through th- this very same thing. And, uh, the presenter asked, how many board members does it take to change a light bulb? You've kind of heard the, the story of different things like that, but, um, and so we talked about it, and the answer is none. Uh, zero, it doesn't take any of them, because that's not what they want to be doing. Board members, uh, basically, they're saying, we want to have light, and we're gonna leave it up to the superintendent and, uh, his or her staff. To figure out how to make that happen, and so what we'll look at tonight a bit is some of those roles, some of those responsibilities. And how we can kind of deal with some of those when they do come up. So, really, in my mind, it's kind of like driving a car with a navigator, so. Even now, of course, you put it into your, uh, GPS and, or your phone, and, uh, it takes you where you want to go, but at one time, um, we had to use maps, and so. The board is responsible for figuring out the direction, the direction of the district, where do we want to go, and working with the superintendent. Uh, to ensure that that happens. And doing that, board sets direction, uh, works through policy, and then engages the community in, in conversation about where, uh, the district should go.
Mister Barker.
Are you guys? Are you seeing the?
Sorry.
A slide, I'm not seeing a slide, I'm seeing, um, uh, Windows menu.
Hmm.
Is everybody else seeing a slide?
No, I'm not seeing a slide.
Oh.
No, we're all seeing the Windows menu.
So it's sharing and it says screen sharing, um.
I think you might have to. Pick a different. App to share.
Oh, okay.
Somebody watch me through this one.
Do you have dual displays going, Mister Barker?
I don't know that I do, let me, I must start sharing quickly and. Let's see, just put this one this way. All right, let me go and see if I can get this going. It. No, uh, you know, it's a. An issue with this in the past, um, preset, your display. And do that. Yeah, I'm kind of at a loss right now, um, I don't know why it would be doing that.
Send the presentation to. One of us and then. You could just go through it.
Yeah, do you see Bobby Schafbauer's name there, you could send it to Bobby dot Schafbauer. At K twelve dot S D dot U S.
Right. Down. Okay, what was the last part of it, at?
At K twelve. Dot S D dot U S.
Okay, it should be on its way.
Bobby, have you gotten anything?
No, it still hasn't gone through yet, it's on its way out. I don't know if it's the size, it'd be that big.
Okay, maybe we'll give it a few minutes and then. So Barker, you'll just have to. Wing it the best you can.
Yep. You can do that, too. Well, it does seem to be hanging up here, so I'll just go ahead and, and I'll walk through it and, um. If it goes through. We can look at some things and if it doesn't, we'll. Take it from there. So, one of the things that. We talked, and, you know. Everybody's got different perspectives and so, uh, you've seen some of the optical illusions where. It looks like one thing and you look at it a little bit differently than it's, it's something else. Um, so we had a couple of those, one, um. Was a little bit more difficult, and so as it gets more complex. Kind of, uh, districts are going through, to go through more and more, it seems. That the perspectives get more complex, and we have to. Kind of stay with the issues or the problem, uh, a little bit longer to find, uh, that solution, so. Um. What we, what we look at then is, how do we? Kind of take those different perspectives and get a direction moving forward? Well, the kind of word that I, I chose was clarity, and. It's, it's almost like taking a trip someplace, you know, we had a, a map going from Rapid City to, uh, say Lincoln, Nebraska. And there's a number of different ways to get there, you could go the interstate to, to Who Falls and Down, um. And just, there's several going through the state. But the clarity is, what are some of the parameters that we're going to set for moving forward? If we want to avoid the interstate, we're going to be taking a different route, but setting those parameters. Excuse me, setting those parameters and staying clear on them, um, that's where we come into. Uh, making sure that we're all going in the same direction and we understand what that direction is, and we can move forward. Uh, the next thing that I would kind of look at those different perspectives and thinking about being clear on. Is you're going through an evaluation process right now, building that, um, for evaluating superintendent. And the first step is to make sure that you have clear objectives, and so, uh, I'm certain that the process that you're going through. Um, does that? But really making it clear so everybody understands what those objectives mean, because sometimes we assume, uh, that people know what they mean. And there could be some misconceptions, so talking that through and, and having that conversation about what they all mean is important. Uh, the next step is having a well-defined process, how are you going to, uh, follow up with the evaluation? What are the steps involved in it, and making sure everybody understands what those are. Uh, the, the third step is. Making sure that the measurements that you're using are aligned to what those objectives are. Um, without that, we could be measuring something totally different than what we're looking for, and then it wouldn't, um. Tell us, uh, what we want to know, and so having those measurements aligned with the objectives, uh, keeps us going in that direction and. And allows us to have a, a solid evaluation, and then the, the fourth step is really effective follow-up. And so without that follow-up and communicating, what does that mean, what did we see, how can we get better? Uh, we don't have a, a, a solid, full evaluation process, so. Those four steps are important, um, we need to make sure that going through that. And, and staying with that. One of the pieces, uh, that I saw was, uh. There's a, a picture that shows the same picture, but it looks differently, your brain is kind of, um. Kind of fooling you into thinking it's actually two different pictures. And what that was reminding me of is that even when we see the same things, even when we hear the same things, we don't always. See it the same way, there's, there's different pers- again, different perspectives, different ideas, thoughts on what's truly happening. And so. To kind of overcome some of that. Communication is key. And one of the things that I've always really tried to preach with our administrators, staff, everyone, is start at the source. So it's really kind of trying to do an analogy with the river, so this is where it starts, it starts at the beginning, it starts where the issue is. And having a conversation with, uh, that person. Follow the channel, um, you'll hear it said sometimes that, uh, oh, so-and-so, people need to follow the chain of command, and I. I never did use that, I always thought it was chain of communication, because chain of command is really internal, that's a, an organizational, uh, term in my mind. And so really, it, it's following that, uh, communication links and starting where. The issue is, because there's so many things that can get, uh, solved in that amount of area, when that happens. And then, the third piece is. Don't dammit up, don't try to fix it, um. Because. You know, thinking about, we're going to the source, we're trying to not create something else. Um, and it's tempting, you know, it really is, I've done it as a superintendent, um, someone would come in and have an issue with a principal or a teacher, and. I'm really wanting to say, hey, I, okay, I can take care of this, but I have to step back as well and say, nope, this is, uh. We have to go through the process, please go talk to them and, and we'll go, if, if it doesn't work out, come back. One of the things that. I had created was a, a visual of. School board. On the bottom, superintendent, central office, building leaders, staff, and then students. And the, the way I looked at that was, those closer to the students have a larger, not necessarily role, but they're more hands-on. But every one of those levels supports student success. And so one of the keys is, if you shift one of those. Levels or two of them, so relationship may be not as good as it should be, communication may not be as good as it should be. Then everything starts to slip, because the first one falls, it's like a set of dominoes. Once that first one falls, the rest of them start falling, and then, you know, issues start to become bigger. So the communication relationships that are built need to stay solid, and there needs to be that, I guess, follow-up to, to ensure that. Students don't get, um, slipped through the cracks because of some different relationship that's occurring, uh, with adults. The fi- I guess the final piece I wanted to talk about was. Looking at strengths. And I'm a, a believer in that it doesn't matter if it's like a Clifton strength, if you're taking an assessment like DISC. Or Values in Action, V I A. It's really looking at and getting to know people on your board, you get to know your superintendent. And you have conversations about, okay, this is why they do, or this is why they think what they do. Lot of study, uh, going on right now about strengths in the workplace, strengths in schools and education. And what they're finding is that. When leaders. Um, work with strengths and, and, and help their staff and, and those that they supervise. Use their strength, build their strength, develop those, they're finding that, uh, people are more engaged, they're more, uh, innovative. Mental health is, is better, uh, motivation is, is improved, well-being and productivity all improve when that happens. And so sometimes it's, okay, we know, maybe I know my strengths, but how do I use that in a, an organizational setting? And really, it's about. Not only learning yours, but learning your team, and, and kind of finding out what do they do best? And really looking into that and diving into that. And then developing, helping others develop those, helping, you know, yourself to develop those strengths. Building a culture around that, and then allowing use of that, so. One of the things that I've. Kind of had experience with was. Decision-making was not, um, I don't want to say it wasn't a strength, because I would make decisions. But I was one of those who really likes to get a lot of information on a decision, and so what I had to do was go back, understand that. Help others understand that and say. Number one is I have to give myself deadlines, you have to give me deadlines, if you want an answer. Like a building principle, uh, you know, if you need this in a couple days, I have to know that, because otherwise I'm gonna try to get a lot of different information to, to make a. Almost a perfect decision, which doesn't exist. But it's knowing that, that then you can, uh, move towards. Using some other strengths to try to get those things done, and so what I found is that. Being able to use those has, has been a benefit, and research is, is showing more and more that. There are a lot of benefits, uh, that come with that, so. Um, that was kind of. An, an overview, I think it, um, might have gone a little bit quick just because of, you know, not having all of the slides and things, but, uh. I guess I would just see if you had any questions, um, for me.
Fine, board members, any questions? Miss Clapham.
It's taking too long, that scroll, my hand, um. I was just wondering.
I was just wondering if you have on those strict strength assessments, do you have a certain one that you find most beneficial or effective? I think it's something we as a board, we haven't done in a couple of years. And I think it might, it might benefit us and learning more about our superintendent. So I didn't know if you had a particular one you suggested or just the fact of just doing it.
Sure. Well, I've, I've worked with Gallup and Clifton Strengths for a long time. I started out as a kind of a strengths coach as a teacher. Moved into the principalship and did it with our staff. And it really is, it's, it's really helpful for understanding. But the reason I like that is there's 34 different themes. And there's nuances to those. So it's not just four or eight or, you know, 12. So that's one that I've found has been very helpful for me. And I've got a lot of examples of where a staff member had a certain strength. And it's like, okay, this is how I have to work with them. So that's, that's the one that I've used. It really kind of mirrors, I haven't dug into DISC yet as much as some of the others. But the VIA, the Values in Action, they, they look pretty close. So Clifton costs you some, you know, a book, probably. It's kind of interesting to read. VIA is free for the top five, but it doesn't give you a lot of what do I do with that? So that's the one that I have used in the past with staff and so on.
Hey, any other questions? All right, board, just for some clarity and information, the reason why we're having tonight's presentation. It is, was a paid part of our evaluation process with the company. And so we were asked if we, I guess this is step five, Mr. Barker, the
That is correct.
Of our, of our process and what we paid for. And so I just thought, well, since we paid for it, we'll have the presentation. So that's kind of how we got here tonight. Again, Mr. Barker, thank you. Any final questions, comments? I, I just would like to say I appreciate it. The professionalism of the company and your assistance in helping us hire Dr. Thompson. So I appreciate all the work that you and your company has done for us to help us through this process. So
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that we didn't get to, you know, kind of work through it a little bit more, but
Yeah, technology happens.
It does.
All right. If you don't have any final, board members have any final questions? Dr. Barker, you can, I guess you can stay or go or whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
Probably go do some more work. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, board members, at this time, if you don't have Super EVAL pulled up, I would ask that you would pull that up. That's the next portion of our agenda. Okay, I lost the agenda, but I'm pretty sure I'm accurate that this is is the part. Okay, just give me, I had mine up and for some reason. One moment. Okay. All right. Are we all, do we all have Super EVAL pulled up? All right. Okay. You will see select evaluation. We're on board self-evaluation. Everyone or most of us completed step one. And if you will open up step two, the board evaluation data. And that data is the results of what each of us individually did in step one. And the first standard is vision, leadership and accountability. I think first, first I'd like to note that none of the areas were we ineffective. Which obviously is a good thing. So
President Carr?
Yes.
I don't know if, and maybe it's just the whole screen sharing thing. I don't know if for the benefit of if anyone were watching this later, do we want to have it on a shared screen or said, I don't know if that's not working for anybody, but just a thought.
I think that Mr. Barker was just having trouble because he had low network or bandwidth.
Okay. Vice President Clapham, that is a good suggestion. I don't know how to share. If you do, you can pull yours up. I don't know if I have to pull mine up or not, or I can have a quick tutorial on what I need to do. Okay. Share screen. Okay, press that. Okay, share.
You got it.
Okay. You can teach old dogs new tricks, I see.
I think
Okay, so, so as everybody can see on standard one, vision, leadership and accountability. We are on the low end of effective for the board develops a shared and obviously you can see it. So I won't read everyone. That's one A. One B is the same place. Okay, one C is a low point. So the board regularly monitors progress on district goals, effective instruction and student achievement with well, with database information. All right, so how this works is if it is your pleasure, we would use that this low item as a goal for this coming year so that we will better better process or monitor our goals effective and effective instruction. Does anybody remember what they put and why they? Well, again, all of us or most of us did put it on developing. So does anybody want to share? Why do you think that's low for us? Yes, Christine?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm toggling back and forth between mine on my screen and yours that's shared. And when you click on it, you can see everybody's comments. When you click on one C that's bold and underlined, you can see everybody's comments.
Sure.
Which kind of jogs my memory because I'm like, what, why did I put that? This one I actually think is probably the one that's been on my mind the most. I think that we, you know, we have a strategic plan, the administrators, the administration has chosen what elements of the strategic plan they would like for us to monitor the district on. And then they present us on those specific elements. Which generally I have, I think a board should have confidence in the people they've hired to do this job. But it also is an opportunity for administration to say, oh yeah, these are the number, they, they can present the data that they want us to see. I think that and I think that that we kind of, that was reflected when we did, when we got updates in February and there was no data like, oh, you know, if attendance is a goal, I want specific data on attendance. Or if teacher retention is a goal, I want specific data. And there wasn't like, teacher retention is a goal. And at this point last year, we had this many resignations. And at this point this year, we have this many. And I, so I think it, I think just relying on administration to pick the outcomes for the strategic plan and then present to us, I don't think that we've done, I don't think that we have been the most rigorous in monitoring district data. And I, and I don't know exactly the best path to get better at that, except to say that that's our ultimate job is to know the progress of the district, like the real meaningful progress of the district. And I'm not sure that we've gotten all that data.
Okay, anyone else? And I did move to the, the individual, show individual board responses. I don't know if you all are able to well, I guess you'll see it like on the, okay, so the one we're talking about. So can you all see that, that Donna and Jamie felt that it was, what is that, effective? And myself, Katie, Angela and Christine thought, what is that, developing? Were you all able to see that? Are you able to see that?
Yeah, we can click on it on our version two.
Okay, perfect. Okay. All right. Any other on one C, we've overall rated it as developing, which then indicates that might be something that we can use as a goal for this year to, to get it from developing to at least effective. Any other comments about that?
I would just say that I think that we were kind of in a step like at the board retreat when HR presented some and said, you know, what do you think of this? And there were some really, uh, we don't really feel like that's what, that's what best serves us. I think that's the, because I think there's, I don't want to say push and pull, but I think there is a collaborative, like, like we could pull 20 things out of the sky, but knowing like, knowing exactly what tests they're doing, what like, I think for administration to say like, here's eight options of, of data points we can give you, like what is the most meaningful to you? So I think it's a collaborative, like, like I absolutely hear what you're saying, Christine, like having very concrete, but I think a collaborative, like here's several things we could give you, like which of these is really meaningful to, to you as a board. And some of them we may say, that doesn't actually tell us much, or that's not meaningful to us. But of these, you know, eight or whatever they come up with, and we say, well, these three are really meaningful to us. So I think like a collaborative approach to say, you know, in this, in this pillar, like these are the things that are important to us. Give us some, you know, three or four points of data that would meaningfully tell us about that. And then we give feedback saying, yep, I can see how those three or four things would help.
Mm-hmm. But I will say like with the HR one, I mean, because this is our self-evaluation, I, I feel like I tried to say many times that data doesn't mean anything to me. If our retention goes down, then our, our amount of applicants per field position, whatever goes up, whatever, it was not meaningful, but nobody on the board backed me up and we weren't effective at getting it changed. It took a new HR director to come in and say, hey, this data isn't meaningful. I, I just feel like I would like to, if attendance is our goal, I want numbers on attendance. I don't want, this is what we're doing about attendance. I want to actually see the numbers. And I, so I, I think we could be more purposeful in identifying our goals. If, if high school retention or completion rate is our goal, then we should get data on that. Not, and, and, and I think the, the data that the administrators bring to us is also valuable, but I think we should have the higher level, like, yes, growth is important. Yes, you know, the enrollment is important in this or that, but ultimately, what's our high school completion rate doing? I guess that's, that's kind of how I, I feel about it. I don't, I don't feel like we're we're getting the the most highest level relevant data that we hear about in the community all the time.
Okay, Ms. Urban?
I agree. I, for me, it would be helpful to see like map testing data at the beginning, middle, end of the year to see how, if we're making any progress, if we're seeing anything different there. I mean, I think that the ACT, pre-ACT stuff is once a year, right? But and then with the map having, like being able to compare it. So this is this time last year in the same cohort. I mean, the more information we're able to get, that would be helpful. For me specifically with academics.
Okay. Any other, Dr. Thompson, I saw your hand up. Do you still have a?
Oh, I was just going to say that when we meet in October, you will see that the administration has listened to the things that you said throughout last year in changing the HR measurements for this year. And also making improvements to how they're tracking volunteers. Those were two of the things that we heard loud and clear. And if there's other data that you want, you just need to let us know.
Okay, so is the consensus that we will put on our board goals, the board regularly monitors, will regularly monitor the progress on district goals, effective instructions and student achievement with database information. And we will be specific in what data that we would like in that, in that goal and objective in that evaluation, we will okay. Go ahead, Christine, and then I have a, I have a comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna agree. I think that'd be a great goal. And then a sub-goal of that would be the board identifies metrics that it would like reports on. And not all of them, but like kind of higher level metrics in the strategic plan that we get. That we have goals for the district. But I don't, I, I could be wrong on that. You guys, you all might disagree with me. But if we're, if we're monitoring goals, I think we have to say what what our goals are.
Okay. I, I think one of the difficult things too about this process is this is what the board is going to do, not what the district is going to do. So for this one, what the board is going to do is we're going to monitor. We have a strategic plan. We have the metrics for the strategic plan. And so our job then is to monitor those reports or those metrics, not necessarily giving direction to the to the superintendent and the district. Mr. Swan?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I remember the first year I was on the board and, you know, we, we had picked like three different things that we were going to monitor. And that we articulated those very well to the community that that's what we were going to do. And I think that's, you know, I, I agree with the the academics. I agree with, you know, with even a special focus on our Native American community because it just seems like we, we seem to be lagging in that, that area so much more than we are any other area. But I just, I, I, I think that we real, when we do this, we really do need to articulate it to the community and articulate it that this is what, what our focus is. And we will be receiving metrics from the, from the district because, I mean, from district personnel, because I think that's the best part of what, and that was under your leadership, you know, President Carr, that, you know, you, you specifically put it out. We were talking about teacher retention. You took all the, you took all the input from the board. And I think this is a great way to get the input and, and start to focus on it because it, it does give us a really good starting point. And I, I agree. I'm sorry, guys, I keep going on and off camera. The only reason I'm doing that is my bandwidth. For some reason, I don't know what's eating up all the bandwidth here, but I'm, I go on and off, so I just don't, you're breaking up and I want to hear what everybody's saying. So if you see me go off, it just means you're breaking up. So sorry about that.
All right. Thank you for letting us know. All right, Ms. Clapham?
Um, I agree a lot with Walt, like tie it together. I think I hear what you're saying, President Carr, as far as like monitoring, true. But I think to be specific about what we are monitoring is, is okay, like to say, like we regularly monitor because just saying monitor is not really, it's like, okay, well, we're just looking at something. What are we looking at? So I think like, I think having the specific data points, and I agree, Walt, and I think a little bit later in our goals, when it
having the specific data points, and I agree, um, Walt, and I think a little bit later in our goals, when it talks about community and how we communicate to the community, which I think all of us marked kind of lower, I think it ties back to this, that like this goal about the objectives, and then also expressing that to community, I think comes a little bit later as far that like how to get that across. Um, but yeah, I think that a specific, you know, and I and I think it's important, kind of like Walt said too, you know, we had like three clear things, we don't need thirty five things. We need a few simple and clear things, and so when we get to that point, whatever point we're saying that, we just need, like I said, we don't need eighty five, because we lose people's attention, and we lose, we need like three to five tops that were really like, this is what matters, I think um being clear and being consistent with that as a board, I think will be beneficial and be a strength for us.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was misunderstood. I didn't have an issue with the specifics parts. The only thing that I was just trying to redirect and being careful that this evaluation is what the board is doing, not necessarily what the district is doing. And so when I said that the board is gonna monitor, that is what, that's specifically what we're going to do, and so whatever the board's pleasure is, whatever data that's the board's pleasure, then that that's that's fine, but it's what we're doing, and we're going to be doing the monitoring. So I just wanted to make that um that clarity, and uh, thank you, Mr. Swan, for your comments. Um, that is, we're the first year that we did this, or last year, we just came out with three to five um objectives that the board we're gonna look at, and so it's the same thing, but it's just being reformatted in one C. So we will have one C as a goal, and then the objectives will be whatever specific data that the board wants to see, so the community will know what we are monitoring, what we're actively looking at and monitoring. Does that make sense to everybody?
It it does, and then to complete that, is that something that we do in a study session in the near future?
It's go- actually, it's gonna be in the next step, and it will be, it, we won't have time to do it now um tonight, I mean, I guess you could, but it's already six, and so if you wanted to spend the time, but I think if we get the the um the standards, there's so many names for them, the standards or the goals uh that we uh rate it low on and use those as what we're gonna evaluate ourselves on, that would be a good uh a starting point, and you'll see uh more clearer at the next step.
I I guess to be clear, we're talking about monitoring the district's data, not the board's progress towards this goal. Like, aren't we saying that we want to pick four mm measurable outcomes at the district that we monitor?
Correct, and then the end of the year evaluation will be, how well did the the board do in monitoring what we said we were gonna monitor?
And and I I think identifying is the first step, that's my question.
And that's what we're doing right now. Yes, ma'am.
We're gonna do, we're gonna identify right now, like, we're gonna monitor high school completion rate, we're gonna monitor attendance, and we're gonna monitor like this data set and this data set and this data set?
Sure, if that's your pleasure to do that tonight, you can do that, yes.
No, I'm not saying it is. I I think that would be a good agenda item on another thing where the board has a conversation in person about like, what are the outcomes that we think that but that we'd like baseline data on and midterm year data on and end of year data on?
Let's get to the next step, and then you will see what I, you'll see what I'm talking about. It'll it'll answer your questions perfectly. Okay, so one C we will use as a goal. Um, one D, we all did effective. Uh, one E is uh a developing area that we can look at. The board conducts a self evaluation to monitor its own performance and participates in professional development, including board training and seminars, which obviously this is the first time that we've even started the process of self board evaluation. Um, but I think it's important that we look at some type of uh professional development, some type of board training, uh some type of seminars. I know we have um, I know I fulfill that um by going to the uh National School Board Association. I know others of you attend our state um state board evaluation, and so those are just two ways among other ways that um that we can try to increase our our professional development. All right, Mrs. Clapham?
A couple things, one, I think, sometimes, and I'll be honest, I'm guilty of it, um the webinars that come out from ASPSD too, like that's something that individually we can do, um and they're generally only an hour, um but they can be very beneficial, so um I think sometimes they sort of, because they come frequently, they sort of feel like junk mail. Um, but really looking at topics that are interested, you know, peak each individual board member's interest, that's another opportunity. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention, and I can't tell if you've heard of, but I don't know if you know at the top, you can click just the lowest performing ones, and you may already be on that filter, I can't really tell, because I can't see the top, but
No, I'm on the average.
So if you go over to show lowest rated companies, that will focus us in on where we feel like as a board we're struggling, and it'll skip, so that might make it a little bit easier. Instead of having to look like, oh, did we score low or high? These will be the ones that definitely are not highly effective or effective, they're all gonna be below that, so uh might just be a little bit easier.
Okay. So um, okay, so if there's consensus, we will um have the board conducts a self evaluation to monitor its own performance, and I think I obviously we're starting that process that first in and participate in professional deli- development, including board trainings and seminars. And so in our, in the next step, we will specifically say, you know, maybe we'll do two professional developments in the next year, or one board training or seminars. I I I think that would have to be some research, I don't know what type of professional developments are are available for um boards, but again, as a goal, that would be something that we will have to flush out and and do if it's your uh desire to do that. Okay, any questions, comments about that? All right. Our next lowest score was on communication and community relations, and so it says the board establishes effective communication with parents, students, staff, and community members while respecting the chain of command and lines of communication. So we gave ourselves an average of developing, which means it probably is an area that we should address. Any comments or questions about this uh particular standard? And is that something you want to work on for next year?
Yes, I think it should be. Ms. Urban can go ahead first.
Oh. Oh, okay, all right, so obviously. All right. So that's three B. So the goals that we have identified as our lowest scoring um are one C, one E, and three B. Okay? All right, now. And so Christine, this is the part now, annual school board objectives, number one and two. So we will put and and uh I I didn't have, I didn't know which one we would select, but I can go backfill, so one C would be uh the title of the annual school board objective, so we have identified one C and then one E and then three B. And under in this section, description of the annual school board objectives. So this would be um one C, what data we are going to monitor, we want to monitor. Uh, one E will be what training, seminars, professional developments that we'll get into, and three B uh will be our communicate, our communication with the the community. Does that, does that make sense? And you see at the top, we're able to add, so we'll keep adding however many objectives that we that we want. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stephenson?
Okay, um, one thing I wanted to throw out for the board, I kind of feel that having a board governance bull goal, even though we didn't really rate it particularly low, taking one of those and moving it over is always a good idea for a board, just to reckon, just to constantly revisit how we're doing with board governance. Um, I don't know.
Was that, can you let me know?
I'm sorry, what?
What, is that a specific one? Which one?
Yeah, um, I mean, it was, we just basically skipped over the entire standard, hold on, I I went to the lowest rated, and now I need to go back. Give me a minute. Um. We skipped all of standard two, because the average was, you know, in between developing and effective, or most, the average was effective. Which is fine that it's effective, I don't need to argue with that, but I think like um, like pulling over um to D. I I just think would if the board clearly understands its governance role and responsibilities, adheres to open meeting laws and delegate district operation responsibilities to the superintendent, because the board is always turning over, I just think it's a great idea to have it on there so that we revisit that, and we have an opportunity to comment on that if it comes up.
Okay, does anybody else feel that two D would is something that you want to move forward as a, as an objective?
I don't have any objection to that.
Okay, there's not, okay.
Uh, I'm fine with that.
I just feel like if we don't have that, then we're gonna be evaluating ourselves on three objectives. Is that right?
Yes, and and the reason why I don't have a problem with that, I mean, we're we're just, this is new, and you know, we're we're, I'm proud that we're at least doing it when we weren't even doing it before, so you know, again, I don't need fifteen objectives, if even if we just started with these three, which we identified as the lowest ones, the other ones, we didn't identify we that we're already in our average mind doing a good job or an effective job in in doing, so. Um, okay, we can move to D, we'll include uh two D in that in our objective, so we'll have four. All right, Mr. Swan?
I know, I know we talk about two D a little bit, but is it like I I don't know, I just, in in light of recent emails that had come across uh claiming our our open law adherence, um, now, um, I just wanna I don't know, are we accepting a responsibility for that when we do this, or are we are we just looking to strengthen ourselves? That's that's the only, I I don't know what optics, or I don't know what that looks like to anybody else, that's just what I'm, that, there's just just me, you know, I mean, I I don't wanna put it out there and saying that, you know, we should all feel this way, I'm just saying that that's kind of where I'm at with that, so just just to let you know.
All right, well, based on the comments, I think we're just honoring um Mrs. Stephenson's desire. I mean, if we said that it was effective, I don't necessarily think it needs to be objective that we work on, but as uh other two board members say, they're not necessarily against it, and n- neither am I in that, in that case, so. Uh, Mrs. Clapham?
I'm just gonna respond to comment on what Walt said, I particularly in timing, like I hear what you're saying on the timing, um, I do think though, because it's a multi-part um objective and saying like, cause one of the things, and we've talked about a lot, you know, our senior president, you know, we need to go upstairs um sometimes, and just like how this talks about like delegating responsibilities as superintendent um as well as our um our responsibilities and roles, so I think it's a a multi-part, I I think if it only said, like only adheres to open meeting laws, then that would, I I get the optics of that, but um I think because it's a multi-part um goal, I I've I don't necessarily see it as like problematic, um and I do think it is hard, because you know, I go in here for, and it's four different boards um technically, and so that every time one new comes along to make sure um that we're keeping them up to speed with the rest of us. Okay, pardon my crying dog.
Right, oh, didn't even notice. All right, so um let's go back to Okay, in this section, and if you will, if you all will allow me uh time to get this all um written out, so at this point, we'll have four um objectives and uh at a at whether you all want to talk about at least one C, and that's the um data that you want to um uh that you want the district to to show us or give to us. Um, it's up to your pleasure, whether you want it, whether you want to do that now or um or later, so um again, we can, whatever you would like to do.
I mean, I think I would kind of feel like one, um, I'd really like for this more to have input here, and I think it's hard to, it feels a little very on the fly, like doing it, and and granted, we don't have to like click and save, but I feel like for us to go back, and even if we all email and say, these are the things that I would be interested, and then we combine those and say, okay, these things rose to the top, and then we have a more public conversation and one that we've had more time to reflect on.
Okay.
I, that would be my preference, I'm always one of seven, but that would be my preference.
Okay, and here are, I found this very helpful, these examples. And so if you just click on the examples, uh so number one, the board will support new board members by streamlining processes to ease their orientation to the board and then their objectives, so um again, when you're thinking about how we want to finalize our uh our uh goals and objectives, I I found this uh very helpful. I didn't look at the annual templates, um, maybe I can look at that later. Um, Ms. Stephenson?
Yeah, I don't think we can get to those examples yet, because the objectives haven't been put in.
Oh, you don't, you don't, you don't s- see those?
But but I will say, and this this might just be how I've been taught to write goals in my professional life, but I feel like the 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 school board objective here is that we will is not that in this goal, we identify the metrics, it's that the board will identify three to five metrics that they will be updated with on a regular basis, like that becomes that's the school board's goal, and then when we meet again, we say, did we identify three to five metrics that we got data on? I think that's how I read the school board goal, not, because we're just making the objective that we are gonna be updated with data, and we're gonna choose the data, and we're gonna be a little more directive in that. But I I agree with Jamie, like this isn't, I don't think this is any time or even the place to put this in. The goal isn't that right now we identified the objectives, the goal is that we say within the next three months, we're gonna have identified the data that we want to be given to us as a board.
Okay, that's fine, but we've identified the four uh the four um annual goal objectives that we are gonna work on, and then you need, you need to give a description, and so it would be appropriate for us to say the three metrics or or data points that you all want, so that in the evaluation, again, as you talk about objectives, you want them to be as specific as you as you can, so in whenever we review, did we um And whenever we review, did we um, did we look at student retention? Did we look at? Teacher retention, whatever, you know, whatever you all.
We can just take it a step back. Did we identify four metrics and did we get data on four metrics?
All right.
I mean, if anyone else understanding what I'm saying here, I think that the the metrics. Our goal doesn't have to be right now, our goal doesn't have to be, we will get data on these four metrics. Our goal can be. We will identify the metrics and we will get data on the metrics. In this timeframe. Because we're not all here and we don't have, we haven't put thought into it. I just, I I feel like it's. It's, I don't feel at all like this is a requirement of of this. Super eval process. I just feel like it's a, we just say that we're gonna identify him and then we meet again and identify him. And then we've met this goal by identifying them.
Hey, Ms. Urban.
I agree with that. I I think that it's good enough to just say. That we're gonna, that we're gonna identify them and then maybe we can come up with a way to do that if we get input about. From everyone about what their um, what they'd like data on, and then we could maybe do some sort of like a. Survey where everybody ranks it and then develop it out of that. I don't know, I think we can talk about different ways to come up with those. Areas, but I think it's enough for tonight um to just say that we're gonna identify them um. Because we need a little bit more time.
All right, so that is uh the 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 process at this point. Um, that we identified the four goals and um the next step will will be to. Identify the uh descriptions of those goals and and what we're going to do. Okay, any other questions, comments? Are we all clear on? What we're going to do? All right, um, I think that's it. Please forgive me, I had my agenda on my phone and I can't find it, but I think uh at this point, we're at. Other.
That's correct.
All right, do, does any board member have an other? Yes, Ms. Stephenson.
Yes, thank you. I sent an email and then I thought, well, maybe I'll just talk to you all right now. Um. I have since heard from President Carr that he could go to Stevens next Wednesday to the government classes, but I have heard from Jamie. Katie. Um, Angela and myself that we can't, so. Does the board feel like sending one person is sufficient for a student listening session? Do we have? I don't have anything, I mean, I kind of thought that sending three members is best because that's just the most. Most ears and the most robust discussion and I think the students would feel more heard if they had more than one, but. Um, does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I kind of feel like I prefer at least two.
I think so too, if Walt or Donna are available, then maybe we could keep it, otherwise maybe look for a different day.
Walt, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm just trying to figure out my lighting too, but um, I I. I, it's so unsettled next week, we just, uh, for me at work, so I'm just trying to figure out. Let me, let me get some more clarity to my work schedule and then I can probably answer that a little better.
Okay, I'll reach out to you and to Donna, so President Carr, you could go to both.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll reach out to you and Donna tomorrow.
Okay.
If you're able to be there and then if I haven't heard or can't get, uh, does everybody think if I can't get two people there? Then we should just postpone them to a different day. Okay.
Fine. Okay, any other? I do have an other, um. We have been um, um Shirley really spoiled us. Um, in our committee notifications and she would just um. Do a calendar invite. And so I talked to Sheila about it and it it it's extra work. And um may or may not be doable with all the committees and all the dates. Or we can be treated like adults, which she has given us um the the committee dates. And we just individually have to be responsible for knowing. Where we're supposed to be and when, um, like I didn't realize tomorrow, um Walt, you. You, me and Mrs. Rafferty are scheduled to do the uh parent. Inter council parent. Ding a bob on Wednesday, which again, as I said. Um, I would just always depend on Shirley to send out that that kind of reminder. Um, so. I I don't know what your pleasure is, whether we just are responsible for our own calendars. Would you prefer or like a reminder for our different things, Mrs. Urban?
Well, I mean, obviously, it's really nice to have it all there, but I understand if that's too much. But what I would ask is like tomorrow, you know, you're on parent council that was decided and I remember seeing that when the schedule was sent out. But like, we didn't do that with student school board. Um, so we have to figure out who's gonna go to which meeting and and I'm not sure if there are any other similar meetings like that where we are going to need to decide then. As a group, who's assigned and then who's gonna do those assigning of dates so that we can have it on our calendar. Um, and have would notice.
I think Sheila already gave us, gave us in our binder. Uh, that schedule of who goes when, where at least to the. Uh, student school board and to the um. The inner, the parent inter council meeting.
Okay, that could be my fault. I definitely saw the parent inter council, but I wasn't sure on student school board.
Okay. Uh, Sheila, am I, am I talking right that you did give us both of those schedules?
Um, I know I did the um inner school parent one and then I had the updated one with names on it for the school board. But I will send that out tomorrow. But the names aren't in there, but I will send a new fresh one out tomorrow to you.
All right, Mrs. Stephenson. Mrs. Clapham.
Oh, um, I guess I should say, like, is it? Maybe this is part of the tradition, cause I like. I get what we're saying about like being responsible, but at some point, I feel like. If like a master board calendar doesn't exist, then I think it like sets us up for, because it's like. The superintendent should know every committee, like obviously she's not gonna be at all of them, like. Definitely not the expectation, but like a master calendar for the board. And I don't know, like, if that's a board member takes up, but I think. If not, you just get like, for example, um. Ms. Rafferty asked me if I could trade with her for something or like the pack, we only have two people. So if somebody, only one person's coming, like someone else could jump in, like, cause if someone marks, like, they're not coming. And I think there's a lot of ways that having it in one place is beneficial. Um, and so not to say like, we're not keeping up with our own things. But knowing, cause even just for example, we say, okay, let's have, we want to have a zoom because something came up. And then committees aren't on the calendar, so then we we schedule over something because. We can't see that this committee is on, so I just like, it, in my mind, it seems like. It would help us all stay on the same page, but I could be crazy to be out there, I don't.
Hey, Sheila, I see your hand and uh we'll, we'll go with uh Mrs. Stephenson, Dr. Thompson, and then Sheila, you will be third.
Oh, I feel like Sheila, did you have a response to what Jamie was saying?
I did. Yes, thank you. In your binder, there is a calendar, a master calendar for you. It's um done by month and then when there's um a committee on there or um like. Um, inter council or whatever, they're all on that master calendar that you did request, it is in your binder um by month.
I, I'm just gonna speak for me, um. The paper calendar is really hard, the binder is really hard. I have my phone with me at all times. I would really love to have invite sent, like I don't have. It it just, we all live on our phones. I feel like the room for error is so big. Um, maybe I just got very spoiled having the invite sent, but it, I think it just leaves a lot of room for error to not have it.
Dr. Thompson?
Sheila and I will figure out a way to make a master digital calendar. However, we don't have all the committee dates. For example, your community or. Or communications committee, whatever that is called, never tells me when you're meeting. So I'm not able to attend if I want, nor could we put it on the calendar.
So there has. Actually, even Sheila a while back about our committee dates, so.
Okay. Telling me that, I appreciate it. We will work on the digital calendar.
Okay, and Dr. Uh, uh.
Few weeks, though. I wanna clarify that.
Mr. Sassy is on, so he can also coordinate finance committee, facilities committee. Uh, are those your only two you're over?
Yeah, and we'll need to get a policy from.
Tony Parker.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
All right, um, that's other, anybody else have any other? Dr. Thompson, your hand is still up, did you have?
I just want control, sorry.
Okay, all right, very good, uh, what time is it? Six forty-eight? I think we did a. Got a lot done and and a lot more to do. Okay, questions, comments, we're all on the same page. All right, I'll entertain a motion for, oh, uh, for other. I, it was, it was uh very exciting. We attended. Uh, Katie was there and Angela was there at the student school board. Um, eh, we've got a good group of of young people uh this year, and so it was great. Being there, seeing them in action and uh looking forward to uh. To their their work. Um, also, our student. Representatives, their first day will be on October at our October seventh meeting, so. We have that to to look forward to. All right, anything else? I don't think I'm missing anything else. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We will. Uh, forego a roll call. I I I I don't, I don't um anticipate anybody. Yes, Dr. Thompson.
We need to go into executive session.
Oh.
Uh, we need to go in for reason um one and three.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get out of here. Okay, um. No other, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. I need a second.
Second.
All right, now we will need a roll call vote, please, Sheila.
Yep, um, Troy Carr.
Yes.
Jamie Clapham.
Yes.
Katie Urban.
Yes.
Walt Swan.
Yes.
Angela Rafferty.
Yes.
And Christine Stephenson.
Yes.
Okay, so Bobby or i- am I to understand where there's a separate? Um, zoom for that?
Yes, sir. Yep, you guys got the invite. It's set to start at seven. I'll start that and you guys can just join in on the exact zoom.
All right, and Mr. Sassy and uh Dr. Strasser, I think it'd just be with Dr. Thompson, so. And who?
Kelsey will be joining for a legal upgrade.
Okay. Uh, hold on a second.
So I would say Kelsey should go first and then she can leave and we can go over my superintendent goals at the end.
Okay, hold on. I didn't see that on the agenda, that. That item, uh.
There's both of the, both of the correct executive sessions were on there.
Okay, I.
I guess. For one also.
Oh, maybe not.
My copy.
It's only Dr. Thompson's.
Okay, so, um. We, we can't do it. We didn't put it on when we approved the agenda, so. Um, we'll, we'll have to do it on Monday.
Wait, we'll have to do Kelsey's?
Kelsey's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, cause we, it it's not on the agenda. Um, that's why I think Sheila and it was my fault, I reviewed the a, the agenda and didn't. Think of it and actually I didn't know that Kelsey wanted us to, so that's why we always just stick both of them on there. And if we don't need it, we, we don't need it, but that's the advantage of putting both. So that we're not in this situation where we can't have her give us an update. Okay, that does, is everybody on the same page about that, understand that and agree with that? Analysis of, okay. Uh, I think we got it. Yes, ma'am, Sheila.
Um, just make sure that you get me the time that you guys adjourn.
Yeah, okay, the, the, okay, so you need the, the, the time of. That the session begins and ends. Yes, ma'am, I can get that to you. I'll get that information to you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right, you all, see you in two minutes.